Call a meeting of the Willetts City Council order for October 14th. We all rise and join Mr. Lacks in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see who's here, Kathy.
Okay. Want some of those trans?
Yes.
Strong.
Here.
Magical.
Here.
Bernstein.
I am here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. So, we need to amend the agenda, it looks like. And the amended, oh. Adrian? Just add closed session, the 14A.
We'll try to decide if it's still necessary.
Okay.
I'd like to add the REMCO litigation matter to the closed session. It will be a discussion that does not involve the potential sale of the properties. It wouldn't be a matter that you have a conflict in.
Okay.
But I'd like to add that.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second to adding the?
Yeah.
I second it.
Larry seemed to be in there just ahead of you.
He jumped right in.
We have a roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Stankey.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
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 Yes. Public communications, do we have any public communications this evening? Items which are not on the agenda, no action shall be taken? Please step up and introduce yourself and...
I'll sign in then.
You can sign in too, that we, we hope they have valuable signatures that we can sell later.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is JR Rose. In 2009, I came here and to the city council, excuse me, and I had a resolution passed about cost of living adjustment, how it affects senior citizens. I was sitting in my, I live in Ukiah, in the county, and I was sitting there at my house and watching the world news and they said according to CPI, cost price index, there would be no cost of raises for the senior citizens in the United States because nothing had changed. Four days later, in the mail, my Medicare D provider sent me a letter telling me that he's going to raise my monthly rates, almost $10, and my yearly rate's $40 of eligibility. And then later reading in the paper, I found out that my Medicare B might be spiked. So what I'm kind of doing is, to all the people which I had these resolutions passed, I'm coming to you as a grassroots and see if you can't come across and help us senior citizens. I kind of seen this coming years ago. That's why I started the TV show, that's why I wrote a column for a while, but I retired, finally retired. I'm 75 now. I like to just sit back and kick back and forget about it, but certain things need to be done. And my point is this, this may be relevant to you or may not be. But in 1958, I was Beirut, Lebanon, fighting the Syrians when they invaded. And they're still fighting over there. We're spending all this money and we're not helping our senior citizens. And it's very imperative that the people who are on fixed incomes, it may not seem so much, but over the last few years, the prices went completely out. So I'm asking you, the city council, to contact your state, your federal representatives, kind of put a fire on them, tell them this is grassroots, just kind of calling it due. I think it's time that, for your constituents here in Willis, I think it's time maybe for you guys to holler at them and say, hey, enough is enough, let's get this done.
Thanks, JR.
Thank you.
I can comment to the fact that our health insurance premiums at work went up 39%. They say the city's looking at what, 18, 17?
We don't have any increase this year.
Yeah, thanks a lot, now I feel better. Okay, any other public communications this evening?
I'm not below your level of receiving.
Okay, step up in front. These are just, sure, no problem. These are items that are not on the agenda if it's...
Okay, I'm sure, I'm positive, this is not going to be on the agenda. My name is Gail Grandse, I've lived in Willetts for 17 years now. I'm originally a New Yorker, raised on the Jersey Shore. 250 years ago, we had a man ride through the United States screaming, "The British are coming." I'm here tonight to tell you that the Muslims are coming. They are here to take away our way of life, they are here to take away my freedoms as a woman. They are trying to impose Sharia law in Irvine, Texas, as we're speaking now, where a lone mayor of Irvine, a woman, is standing up against them, saying, "You're in America, you live by American laws, you live by American ways, or you leave. You embrace us, or you leave." Last week, President Obama started a program of bringing in 10,000 Syrian Muslims into the United States without telling anybody on a local level where they're going, where they're going to live. 80% of them are on welfare. The statistics are coming in from Europe where I've got, I brought my cellphone with me so I could show you videos of these people on the rampage in Europe, demanding their money. They're demanding sex, they're raping children, they're raping women. The statistics out of Stockholm alone, in the first seven months of the year 2013, 700 women raped, 300 children raped by the Muslims. And they're moving them into Santa Rosa, San Francisco, San Jose, and all the way on down to San Diego. There are mosques over in Sacramento. There's a town in New Jersey that's being forced to pay 7.7 million to build a 14,000 square foot mosque for the Muslims. We need to get laws in place in Mendocino County immediately, if not sooner. We are not going to honor Sharia law in this town or in this county. We are not going to build any mosques. And certainly, the reports coming out of the middle school over behind the clinic over there, a friend of mine visited one night to me over in my apartment and said that his daughter, his granddaughter, came home with a story that she's being taught that Allah is the one true God in our schools here through Common Core, right over here. Please, people, we need to put, I've talked to our councilmen in the county. They talk, they talk to me like I'm just an absolute nut job. I've got the videos right here, video after video after video of women being attacked in the streets because they've got a skirt on.
I don't want to cut you off, but you're at the end of your time period.
Okay, okay.
But thank you for the call.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely, you're welcome to come anytime.
Thank you.
Do we have any other public communication? Seeing none, we will move on to the more mundane parts of our agenda. Don't see Allison here, is it?
She's not here, she ended up dropping off a letter to all the council members, basically thanking us for our contribution and sharing what it's being used for, which is going to help fund the current installation of their, the current exhibit on civil home front in Mendocino County during the Civil War.
Good, okay. I see it now. We have items, moving to the consent calendar, I see items A, B, and D. Item C has been polled. Do I hear a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Is there a second on this consent calendar?
I'll second.
Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
I'm sorry, which one was polled?
Uh, C.
C, okay, thank you.
So it's...
All the others, okay.
Okay, oh, any comments up here? Roll call vote, please.
Councilwoman Stankey.
Yes.
Strong.
Yes.
Magical.
Yes.
Bernstein.
Yeah.
Mayor Burton.
Yes.
Bruce, I would like the information reports under that. I would like somebody to explain to me E, which is the cost allocation plans, please.
Well, we've got just the person that can do that, right?
I know who can.
Sure. It is always, it's always good to have a refresher on that.
Okay, so the cost allocation report, the primary objective is to spread the costs from central support departments to the departments that are receiving the support. So there's two steps, the first step is to central services to central services. So HR to finance, HR to city department, anything that's central. And then the second step is to take the central services and then spread those costs out to those that are receiving the services, the receiving departments. If you look on page, oh, the allocated costs are based on the actual costs from the audit from 1314. And on pages 10 to 22, the central services are listed on the left-hand side and the receiving departments are across the top. Page 10 to 22.
Can you say that one more time?
Sure. The central services are listed on the left-hand side of the page and the receiving departments are across the top. There's a total of $1.3 million that's being spread across all departments. And pages 24 and 25 show how the allocation basis are determined. So, for example, if it's by employee, HR would probably be by employee, I could have to look, but... The building maintenance would be by square footage of each department, that type of thing.
I didn't study this in great depth, but there were some things that sort of flagged as the question. So for example, on page 11, I see legal services is about 77,600 under Public Works Administration. And I sort of assumed that must have been as a result of that lawsuit, but I'm not sure why it shows up under Administration, Public Works generally, maybe it's something else.
The majority of that is from contracts being approved and depending on the amount of time that's being spent. And there were a lot of Public Works contracts that were...
So it's not about losses, it's about...
It's not about losses or anything like that, it's about how much time the attorney spends in each department.
Anyway, that raised, I just was, it seemed like an awful lot of money for Public Works Administration in particular. And then on that same page, it's 40,000 and almost 700 of human services for the swimming pool operations. And I realized that that is somewhat time consuming for human services because of temporary people learning, or sorry, but anyway, it still seemed like an awful lot of central service to temporary, you know, seasonal employees. So that, those were two fairly big little issues that I wanted to explain. And then there was also on page 17, sewer administration had quite a high city manager and finance costs listed. I don't know what to, I'm going to explain some of that. I think those are the main ones.
Tell me the one on page 17, the sewer operation.
Under sewer administration, there's, you know, pretty big chunk of money for the city manager and for finance.
And this would have been the year that, and this is 2013, 14, when we would have been going through the brick trails lawsuit.
That's what I suspected, but I wanted to just find out. So this, but this is then going to be applied as if it's ongoing, as if it's typical, it's going to be applied in the next fiscal year, just because that's the way they do it?
Exactly.
Even though that was an unusual situation.
Yeah, they would have less than the next year or the previous year.
Yeah, it seems like they should, in such a situation, they might average over several years so that you don't have a spike in current fiscal year for something that only happened, you know, two years ago.
We could do that, but the, the goal is to take the total expenses for that year and spread them out. So, I mean, if you, if you weighted it or did it a different way, you wouldn't be doing all of your expenses.
Yeah, okay, well, it just, I know that again carries over to a year in which hopefully that isn't going to be a typical situation.
Yeah.
Well, you just moved to the next year where you have yet another extraordinary event that you have.
Well, there are always extraordinary events.
We seem to always have that extraordinary event.
So that will vary year to year then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because it's based on actual expenses.
But this is, this is what we're going to use to figure out what our budget is like for the fall, for the next year, essentially.
This one actually will be used for the budget that we just finished. These, these numbers will replace the ones because, and then when we get our, our audit for 1516, or, I'm sorry, when we have our audit finished for 1415, we will take those numbers and they will go toward the next. We're kind of behind a year and we're catching up.
Can you also just address that one on page 11 on the human resources amount supporting the human operations? If there's any deeper...
Um, I, I, the only, I don't know off the top of my head what the answer is, but I'm going to make an educated guess that it was because in 1213, you had a city clerk that was also your HR person, and then in 1314, you had your full-time HR person, and that person is being spread out by the number of employees. And there's the hiring, the, you know, letting go, the, so all of that for the...
There's a number of temporary lifeguards, like, as far as that...
It just seems like...
They might be only temporary lifeguard or temporary, temporary staff, but the process is still the same labor-intensive process to recruit and hire and, you know, do all of the free employment stuff and then the exit stuff at the end of it.
We did this a couple of years ago, as I recall. It was, it was, it was all about setting the rate for the sewer charges to brick trails. That was behind, as I recall. We had to do the allocation setup, actually, it was created, I think, about two, three, maybe four years ago?
2010.
Okay, and to set up a program on how to allocate the overhead. So is this, this is an up, an upgrade of the, of the previous one?
Yep, we update it every year.
Okay, I see.
With the, with the current numbers.
And, and I guess it's important to point out that any of the numbers that we see here, this is money that's spent anyway. And what this does is just allocates it to the different operating departments.
That's correct.
So, you know, if you're looking at a certain amount of money allocated to one department, it's taken out of that department, has to go to another department.
That's correct.
So it's not like we're creating, you know, costs or anything like that, it's what we spend.
Thank you, Suzie.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I did see that Allison showed up, too bad she lost her place in line.
You'll have to wait till next month.
Allison, we'd be glad to back up one step if you would like to step forward.
Allison Glassy, Mendocino County Museum Director, and I had to lock up the museum before I had to down here, so. I was talking with Adrian and it seemed like maybe it was time to do a brief update to the city council as a whole, and so here I am. The, and there are a bunch of things to say. One is, thank you very much for the $1,000 that you allocated in your budget or appropriated in the budget, and we received that check, and we appreciate the fact that you remember us each year and that that goes towards our exhibits and educational programs, and so thank you very much. Also, thank you for asking Matt to be your representative on the museum advisory board. We've always had great representatives from the city, and so she, she is now it, and we really appreciate having her there. In terms of other things that we're doing, the first week, week and a half of November is going to be pretty pivotal. I think you already know, on November 3rd, the Board of Supervisors is planning to have off-site meeting, and so they're having it at the museum. So we will be open on a Tuesday. And, and I know the city council always gets involved in welcoming the Board to there, but they've been doing the advanced preparation in terms of making sure we have room and that kind of thing. So, I beg your pardon? So that's Tuesday, November 3rd. On Saturday, November 7th, we have a museum heritage lunch for the mushroom wine and beer festival. As you know, we're not able to do the train this year because there's no connection between Fort Bragg and Willets to bring the trains from both sides. And so we're doing what we actually did before the train, next year we'll get back to the train, but we're having a luncheon in the museum and it's being catered by Suleen Bell, will have mushrooms, and Mark Beeman, who's assistant winemaker from Betzer, will be speaking, and Mary Windsor and Allison Gardner, who are mushroom chefs. And so it's going to be just a nice relaxing thing, and I've got little...
When is that?
Saturday, the 7th, at 1 o'clock, so I've got little leaflets here and I don't know if you want me to pass them around or...
Sure.
Okay. And I brought extras.
You have to excuse, a branch fell outside on the street, and so there, I think it's a safety issue, they want to get it out of the way.
City services, always at work.
Yes.
So, okay, and then on November 11th, which is Veterans Day, another county holiday, the museum will be open because that is the dedication of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial that is being put in front of the museum or slightly to the right side of our current entrance. And it, the ceremony is at 2 o'clock, and everything is on target and on time. So they should be beginning to move the earth around, I was told that it was going to happen this week. So that leaves tomorrow and Friday. So I think it's actually going to start tomorrow, and John Sherman has been out to, to look at it, so it's going to be ADA compliant and the way it's installed and everything else. The granite monument itself should be delivered, and the date could change, but I've heard the crane is going to be here on October 27th. But it will be in place by November 11th, and all sorts of important people are going to be invited, including yourselves. And the goal is to have a ceremony that, there are a lot of family members. Dennis Minor not only has done tremendous amount of research on the, the young men from Mendocino County who were killed in the Vietnam War, he has also reached out to all of their families. And so there are going to be people who really probably haven't talked about any of this for quite a while, who will be coming and will be there. And then, you know, we're inviting the Board of Supervisors and our legislators and those kinds of people. I'm sure there's lots happening on Veterans Day all over the place, but this is kind of a one-time occurrence. And so there will be refreshments afterwards, and there will be light music from the 60s played by Hal Wagonette in the backyard afterwards. And there'll be a receiving line that will be asking anybody who, you know, all elected officials, et cetera, if you'd like to be in the receiving line, we would like to extend that. So you will get a de-formal invitation, but I wanted to kind of let you know the, the plan is groundwork starting this week, moving on, installing the granite at the end of October, and the dedication ceremony on the 11th. Beyond that, we're planning with some motive power for the holiday time period, and we had a successful kinetic carnival, we'll be backwards, successful kinetic carnival, and we are starting planning now for the museum roadshow, which, as you know, always premieres in Willets first in March of next year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're just kind of working on a lot of things, but I thought you should know what, what's happening with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial and, and the first week in November where lots of things are happening.
Good, thank you, Allison, any questions up here? Yeah, Matt?
Well, I just wanted to comment that I had a friend, I'm here from France, and we spent plenty hours at the museum, and she and I were both very impressed with the quality and subject matter and how balanced some of the presentations on, you know, some fairly controversial things like the Civil War issues and the Native American history, and how beautifully displayed and thought out the displays were, and she was really impressed with Willets and the museum.
And so was I. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Allison. City manager, right to appeal.
We have to vote on the consent calendar, we didn't?
We did, we did it. I'm going to pass on reading your rights to appeal, I suggest you read it if you find anything.
Do you want to appeal?
So, so distasteful this evening. So let's move on to city manager reports, report reports.
Well, it's been five weeks since we met, and we've, we've been busy. Certainly, meetings are keeping us very busy. Some of the meetings that have occurred since we last met, John Sherman isn't here tonight, but we did conduct a flood preparation meeting, met with our stakeholders from Fish and Wildlife, Caltrans, the water board, county, Larry was there. So that was a, that was a very productive meeting. And I think Rod may be able to comment under his time about some stream bed work that's going on or will be going on shortly. Airport day occurred, it was when we had pretty heavy smoke in the area because of the Lake County fire, and so we didn't have the full attendance that was anticipated, but it was a good turnout. It also served as the open house for Reach's facility at the airport. That same day in the afternoon was the new hospital dedication, and I think just about everybody was there for that. International Coastal Cleanup Day, I was not able to attend that, but I believe Holly, you were there? Great turnout for that. Really happy to have that here inland, and John Sherman deserves a lot of credit for making that happen. I attended last week, a meeting at the county, it was an economic development study focus group, and it was put on by County Planning Department and the Community Development Commission, and they commissioned a study where somebody from Chico State came out and did a survey of about 360 businesses throughout the county. He apparently was up in Willets on one or more, more than one occasion, talking with local businesses about what their challenges are and needs are. Lot of the same issues throughout the county, but then some, some ones that were specific to each area. Obviously, in Willets, we have marijuana was, was a big topic of conversation. So there are going to be continued meetings in that regard, but I just wanted to mention that that is something that's happening at the county level, and there were representative, representatives from all four cities there, as well as the West Company, the Farm Bureau, chambers, all three chambers of commerce, so it was a good...
Was there a report that came out of that, or is it more of a conversation that's ongoing?
There was a report, it was not presented to us in writing, we are supposed to receive it via email. So it was basically the...
Would love to get a copy of that.
You bet, yeah. Let's see, last week was a REMF board meeting in Ukiah, and Suzie attended that on my behalf. She might have something to comment on in that regard. Last Friday, we had the second... Last Friday, we had the second of the re-activated mayor's and city manager's lunch. This one was in Fort Bragg. Willets hosted the first one a few months back, and Bruce can talk about that, but it was, everybody showed up for that, so it was really great to- Point Arena has a new city manager, someone that we all know, Richard Schumaker, so he was there with his mayor. And it's just, it's, it's a good opportunity to get together and network and talk about some of our shared challenges. Saturday and Sunday, actually, were two great community meetings. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be here for those, but I know that several of you attended them. So, on Saturday was the community workshop for the Arts Center, and it was a four-hour-long facilitated workshop. A lot of good ideas were generated from that. You were there for that, Holly? So, you might wanna-
I was there for it.
Okay.
Well, were you at that one?
No.
Is that person on?
Upcoming, next week, Rod and I will be attending the annual Calpelra Conference. This is the statewide labor, Public Employers Labor Relations Association, and I've gone to it every year. It's one that REMF encourages us to go to, and it actually pays for us to go. And I've taken different folks each year. I took the chief, police chief one year, and so I thought that this would be good for Rod to get a little bit more up to speed on public employment law. It covers a broad range of, he's just thrilled, can't wait to go.
Did I forget to say, Sunday was the forum, the town hall-
Town Hall Forum, yes.
About recreation district ideas.
Right, right. And I know that that's coming up again tonight. On Monday, the 26th, the County Ad hoc Committee on Marijuana is going to be held in a session in the evening at 5:30 at the county, in the County Board of Supervisors chamber, so just putting that out there. On the 29th, at this point, is the new date for the hospital patient move. And the next rewrite ad meeting is going to be on November 5th. The next council agenda on the 28th, we're gonna have the Johns Place New Application. I had originally anticipated that it would be tonight, but due to the noticing requirement, it had to be put on for the 28th. We also have to talk at the next meeting about economic goals, because Holly, you sent me an email. You did mention-
What kind of economic goals?
God, I'm sorry that I'm saying this.
I can go a little ahead of that when we get to EDFC.
Okay. On November 1st, we are gonna have a new mixed organic service as part of the solid waste pickup. And so, I did make contact with Jerry Ward recently. They're working on the stickers and the promotional material. He's out of town this week, so early next week, we'll connect on that. It's something that the city has to approve materials, and so that's what that's about. But he says that they're on track for all of that. I think all of you are aware that last week, the governor signed a package bill regarding medical marijuana regulation, and we're gonna be looking at that, I think, by March of next year. We're gonna have some, have to have some code updates in place. Let's see. And then, lastly, the next council meeting is scheduled on a city holiday, Wednesday, November 11th.
Which is Tuesday?
Not the next one, the one after.
I'm sorry, the one in November. And we only typically have one meeting in November, so I wanted to throw this out to you to see what your thoughts are. I was originally going to suggest that we just keep that meeting date. However, it might be best because of another meeting that we would have to go to closed session on afterwards, to have the meeting on the 10th, while we have some out-of-area reps here. It's related to negotiations, labor negotiations.
To do it on Tuesday instead of Wednesday?
Yes.
Tuesdays generally do not work for me, I can say that. What about having it on the 18th, or do we need to?
We could keep it on the 11th. I just was trying to take advantage of the fact that we'll have these reps here already that day, and it would be much easier-
I'm available on the 10th.
I am. I have two. We'll just make that work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are you available for Tuesday to 10th?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just wherever you guys want.
Okay.
Back and call.
So, we will vacate the November 11th meeting.
And the 18th either.
Right.
Were you done with your?
Yes.
Is it possible to get an update on the public status of the REMCO? Not what we're gonna be talking about in closed session, but actually, the property purchase. A number of people in the community have been asking, what's going on with that?
Well, what I can, what I can tell you is, we're waiting for the trust to tell us that all conditions that were imposed by the City Council have been satisfied, and they are recommending a particular project as the, as the purchaser of the project, of the property. And I know the trust is working with the proposed developers, and it's working with Pepsi. And one thing I learned yesterday was that the insurance litigation that's been going on for more than 10 years is finally about ready to settle. For years and years, that insurance litigation that was pending, that has been pending in Santa Rosa, has just been basically on ice. And every, every six months, there's a new status conference, and the parties, the attorneys tell the judge, we're waiting for these 900 personal injury lawsuits to settle. We can't, we can't resolve the insurance litigation until there's first have been a resolution of all the personal injury cases. And every six months, it's the same thing. We're finally at the point where the personal injury cases have been resolved, and Pepsi has made good progress, I hear, with the insurance companies to settle. Pepsi had an insurance policy for environmental cleanup, and Lloyds of London, and others didn't wanna pay out on that, and they finally have come to an agreement. And I understand that it's, that Pepsi will be recovering a significant amount of money from the insurance companies, and they intend to use those recoveries to fund the cleanup. And so, this is gonna require an amendment of the consent decree and getting Judge Gilston to approve the consent decree amendment that will put Pepsi in a position to, will require Pepsi to continue to fund the trust's remediation efforts through the completion of the cleanup, through the issuance of a no further action letter from the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And so, it's taking time. It's taking longer than we had hoped, but it's, I'm told that it's difficult to make things happen at Pepsi, but I am hoping in the next meeting that we'll have some more concrete information to give you, including about the status of the developers.
Okay.
Wasn't that, wasn't there litigation coming out of LA on, I thought there was a, was the, insurance litigation was, was happening out of Los Angeles, 'cause there was a bunch of different sites involved?
There may have been, there may have been, and I know that-
Just going too far back.
I know that for at least 10 years or more, the insurance litigation is primarily in Santa Rosa.
I didn't remember. I don't remember that happening.
And are we waiting for a letter of assurance from Pepsi saying that they'll do that, or are we waiting for the whole change of the consent decree and all that?
We're waiting for written confirmation from Pepsi-
Okay.
...that they are on board to fund the cleanup through the completion, even though it might take some additional time to get the consent decree.
But if the court issues a new, a change on the consent decree, doesn't that kinda trump the letter from Pepsi? I mean, make it unnecessary, so to speak?
Well, this, we're hoping to get satisfactory commitment from Pepsi-
Okay.
...that is an enforceable commitment that we can impose against them. If they change their mind, that it's something that is enforceable, and it has some teeth behind it, and we want it to be compatible also with consent decree, whether or not the consent decree is a unnecessary step. I know that Pepsi and the trust are, are proposing to do it that way. And I would think that if all the parties stipulate that this is what they want, and it's going to have the, the site completely remediated and an end-use developed that's beneficial, finally will have a beneficial use of the property, I would anticipate the judge approving support of it.
Okay, so it sounds like a redundant system, which is good. Nothing wrong with that.
Are you, I wanted to just comment on the aspect of the solid waste of Willets, the Unionist Organic Waste Program. And I'm glad that they are preparing a way for that. I just wanted to specifically alert our local media that I'd like to see some kind of advance heads-up to the community that this is coming, and which things are gonna be covered, and, you know, how people can take advantage of this new service. So, I don't wanna wait-
Did you wanna buy an ad in the newspaper?
I just don't wanna have the information just start up on November 1st. I hope people in the community start hearing about it.
Jerry's not been very helpful.
That'll be bad.
Let's move on to department recommendations. City clerk?
Move it. Move up the filing project.
At the moment, we actually have a gentleman here who's from Oakland, putting in a branding filing system for us. So, it will be nice, 'cause our office will have everything hopefully where it's supposed to be. And we're hoping to move on to other departments so that the city can run more smoothly when it comes to asking for a document, requesting things, that they'll be at our fingertips.
A paper filing system?
Yes, the filing system has been needed for a long time.
Well, it's also electronic.
Yes.
He's building, there's a whole software system that goes with it.
All right.
So, it'll be nice when it gets up and running.
Suzie, did you wanna touch on something?
Sure. I wanted to talk to council about a USDA loan that we have from 1993. The loan is scheduled to be paid in full in November of 2033, and it has a principal balance of $3.3 million.
Is this a sewer line replacement loan?
It is, I'm not, it was from 1993, and it was sewer construction loan, is how it's titled.
No, it was a sewer line.
Okay.
Is that 3.3 million, did you say?
No, it was a $5 million schedule.
No, that's remaining.
And now, it's at 3.3.
The million, I didn't hear that.
And it's, and it's not due to be completely paid off until-
2033.
32.
Forty-year note.
Yeah, it was a 40-year note. The interest rate on it is 5.125.
Really?
And so, staff is requesting permission to go forward, looking for cheaper financing of that, and to just make sure that, it looks like, even if we got 1% less, it would be $365,000 savings. I think we can get more. I think it's gonna be more like half a million dollar savings over the-
We just need to get USDA to rewrite the note, just write down the interest rate.
I can try that. I would support either option.
That's what they do to you at the bank. So, no, I mean, absolutely. I think that that's worth-
Okay, so if it doesn't cost anything, and if it saves-
Well, yeah, bring back a-
And if it saves us money, definitely bring back more information.
Good idea.
Okay?
Term of payments.
Absolutely.
Do we, do we have any other 5% money?
No.
We should've caught that earlier, and I should've thought about that note. I knew that note was here.
Well, it's only, what, three years, or how many years into it? Since-
Since 90. 1993.
Oh, okay, so it's been a good three, okay.
As Adrian mentioned, at the REMF Board meeting, the, you know, we just self-insured with our health insurance plan, that's going swimmingly so far. We haven't had to get into any stop-loss or anything. We're getting our reserves up, everything's looking good on that front. But work comp and our liability insurance is probably gonna see a little bit of an increase, I'm gonna say 10 to 15%, but they didn't have, didn't have numbers settled, but they're losing money in those two areas, and they need to work that up. And so, that's probably gonna be something that we're gonna see next year, so this 16, 17 budget. Had a sales tax meeting, the rest is not gonna be so good. See, a sergeant with a good. Had a sales tax meeting with our, our Muni Services agent, and we had a decrease over last year, mostly because of the cost of fuel. The price of fuel is going down, therefore, sales tax is going down, 'cause that's our number one sales tax revenue. Trying to find a way to estimate what it's gonna be after the bypass. Short of contacting Caltrans and saying how many people continue going north and how many turn at Highway 20, I don't really know.
I wouldn't waste your time.
I don't estimate it.
Just take a guess.
Just write it.
So, what are you seeing in sales tax?
How much? It was about a 7% decrease over last, the quarter.
Quarter to quarter, year to year.
From last year.
And that would be which quarter? The April, March to June of 15?
The March to June is what we're talking about, yeah. Which we would've been paid for in July.
Yeah.
And then, we'll have a report next, for the next meeting, that shows July through September. And maybe not all the detail, but it'll, it'll have some, some numbers that will be good for us. Finance committee meeting, we'd like to schedule that for October 27th. Some of the things on the, at the meeting that I'd like to discuss is update on how we're doing budget-wise, and also our bank reconciliations. That's one of the things that the auditor wanted, was for the finance committee to at least view the bank reconciliations, so bring those with us.
Just as a scheduling note for the mayor and vice mayor, 10:00 AM is the Top 10 Employers Roundtable on that day.
Right, well.
So, I don't know what, when you're-
We're gonna do it late, late in the day. We always do them late in the day.
Okay.
Do you have a time, or are you women told that later?
I don't have a time yet.
Okay.
We'll work that out. 4:00, 4:30.
You good?
I think that's it.
Well, thank you, Ms. Holmes. Let's see, we, anything up in legal you wanna?
Well, I was just gonna mention, I've received this very interesting memo about the water rights.
Yes.
And I don't know if now's the time to talk about that.
Yeah, sure.
Well, we received a memo, I'm told that this was prepared by a college student who researched newspaper articles from the Willets News and the Willets Branch Library, and gives a summary of his findings.
Her.
There's her findings, excuse me. What's her name, by the way?
Rachel.
Rachel Camachal.
This is the September 16th.
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't have any name. Rachel.
Rachel Camachal.
Well, in any event, what's significant about her summary of findings is that it appears that Willets was using, before 1914, water from the creek that's now known as Davis Creek in, as early as 1901. And at that time, it was known as a different creek name, but the same body of water. And what's significant about that is that in 1914, December of 1914, is when the state water code was enacted, which required persons to apply for permits to appropriate surface waters. Before that time, it was first come, first served, and a seniority-based system. And if you could establish that you had been using diverted appropriated water before the water code was established, that you had a priority, priority of senior rights. And, you know, recently, in the last year or so, we've received orders from the regional board, or regional, or rather, the Water Resources Control Board, I believe, to, to stop diverting water, and because we only have junior rights. And so, it might be worthwhile to explore the feasibility of trying to have the state recognize our senior priority rights. And I'd be happy to look into that and report back to you if you'd like.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the whole, was the whole purpose, and I think it's, I think it's extremely important for us to do that personally.
I think that's a really good idea, to do that, to research it and have it down in record, 'cause that, that could be a really big deal.
And this only refers to the surface water, correct?
Right.
Not groundwater?
Correct.
This is pretty great, the little like Harold from 1901. Harold stands for an adequate supply-
Harold stands for an adequate supply of pure water to be owned by the town and thoroughly equipped fire department, an active improvement club and good sewer system.
It takes young eyes to read that.
Well, these are the things in the corners.
So this could mean that the direction, the directives that we've received every year about releasing water could be trumped by this?
Potentially. We also, we also learned over the summer that even, even those who have senior water rights are not immune from regulation, you know, you still can't wastewater, but certainly they have senior priority rights to a junior water holder.
Good. Be interesting to find out then, exactly what it means.
So, yeah, she, she did a great little job with this, I thought. Yeah, I'll have to read it. Better $360 a city ever spent. So, good.
She wants to be an engineer.
Let's move then along to Public Safety Chief. Anything? We're teaching our tree limbs to break off and not hit things. I don't know how to do any better with public safety than that.
Tree limb whisper unless somebody files a claim and I didn't know anything about it, so. Just it's that time of year, we're getting our folks passing through town and we're getting a lot of calls. In fact, I met with Lisa Epstein today from the Chamber and told her we do want to be called and we're out there with a lot of the businesses working with them and making sure that all the trespassing issues are addressed and Safeway's on board with us, they've been calling us when it becomes an issue there for their customers. Just basically call us, we can't just drive by and arbitrarily kick people off of people's property unless they're doing something wrong, but that's against the law.
Jerry, before you get off of that subject, I'm sure you're aware of the, the shooting that occurred in the Bay Area, the hiker, and there was another woman who was killed as well, and there were three drifters they're calling them. And according to the, the evening news, it seems like there's, there's this growing concern by a lot of jurisdictions that these drifters are, are posing a public hazard and they're starting to look into what to do about it. Do you, are we following that or?
I mean, as far as I know, that's a homicide investigation, as far as I think every community on the North Coast that I know of is dealing with this issue. For us, it becomes an annual migration that comes from other parts for one specific reason for the most part, of folks from all over the country. I'm from Holland, the other day there was a fire behind Skunk Hollow and I'll tell you at one point, I told everybody to sit down next with the rest of the United Nations because there were folks from all countries coming out of the bushes, literally. And, you know, we warn them, we document the warning, we have issued campaign citations at various places. We're trying to work with the different businesses. In fact, on Monday, we've been trying to watch a couple of the businesses on East Barber Lane, for example, and we ran into some folks and these were, at least one of the persons involved was local, but we had a vehicle that we came upon with some folks sleeping in it. And they ended up taking off and one of my officers tried to, they actually did hit our car, but it didn't cause serious damage. And we had to discontinue the pursuit because it was right during school time. We'll be submitting a case to the DA's office, we were able to come back in and identify the driver. So it's not just folks from points far away, but some of our locals and it's a variety of things. I think we have to look at it, to what they're doing and deal with the behavior. And I've said that before, but that's what we have to concentrate, we can't just go on looks. And if they're just sitting there, but people don't have signs or haven't asked them to leave or haven't called us to ask them to leave, then we're kind of stuck. So we're there to help the community, but it's a partnership and.
Well, I guess where I'm going is that this, it seems like it's, it's turning from just a nuisance to something a little more serious. Because as I've said on the news report, it seems to indicate that a lot of the jurisdictions are concerned about these people who are coming in with weapons and, you know, there's, there's bad things that are starting to happen and they're looking at them a little more closely.
Well, again, it's got to be on a case-by-case basis under the law. We did, over here by the, where the Episcopal Church did arrest somebody there for having a billy club. So again, we have caught folks that are here as sex offenders that have not registered. We have caught folks with warrants, we've caught folks with warrants where the other jurisdictions aren't willing to come get them, so it's merely, okay, you need to move along. So again, it depends on what they're doing and what crimes we can prove and that's where it's at at the moment.
Well, it turns out that these, these, these three people had priors, I think, in another state, another warrants or something. And so I guess it opens up the possibility of just having what you would call a safety check, contact them and talk to them and see who they are and, you know, call it in or something.
Again, it's got to be based on a crime or some sort of reasonable suspicion, there's a crime afoot, merely appearance is not enough. It's going to have to be that they're in the wrong place at the wrong time.
Panhandling?
Yeah, panhandling, but we, we also work with a lot of the businesses for after hours. We have distributed basically letters of agency where the businesses have given us permission to come onto their property after hours, so. Then we get stories all the time, in fact, over here at the Episcopal Church where somebody was sleeping, claimed that they were given permission by the meal program, that apparently later on, the meal folks said they didn't do that, but folks will tell us a variety of stories. So again, we still have to check things out when these things are happening and.
Well, I was on a ride along several years ago, it was like 2:00 in the morning, there was just some people walking down the street and, and the officer stopped them and, and talked to them, which is an opportunity to find out who they are.
And again, it's got to be a consensual contact.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, it wasn't anything, it wasn't, yeah, but, but there was a contact and I'm sure, I, I think he asked for identification and, you know, which opens up other avenues.
Again, there's, again, that's the, what we train the officers to do is to be resourceful, but again, follow the law and the Constitution when dealing with folks. And so that, again, bad guys don't have to play by rules, we do, so, and that's where we're at. So it is, that's the time of year and again, the, we want to work with the businesses and the community out there, but it's a partnership and I want to make that clear. We need them to call us or work with us and tell us that these folks don't belong in certain places so we know to check those places out.
Thank you, Jerry.
I want to, to applaud that, that approach that you take in that is that it's based on behavior, you know, and if they're doing something that is illegal or if the property owner is filing a complaint, that is an appropriate use of the police power. And, and I would not want to see us sweep people up just because they're out at 2:00 in the morning, they might just, you know, that's their right to be out at 2:00 in the morning, provided they're, you know, following the laws. So I, I think that's an important thing, is based on behavior and if they violate those things then. And I feel, I just want to mention that that same thing goes for Muslims and if not all Muslims, as was implied earlier today by our public comment, that there's an awful lot of perfectly wonderful citizens here who are Muslims and they are not all tarnished because some individual does something illegal. You persecute, you prosecute the law, you don't prosecute the entire, you know, race of people or how they live. I think that's an important thing for us to keep.
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Public Works, Rod, what's? What are you tearing up now?
How was your vacation?
It was great.
Well, it feels like a long time ago.
It, uh, yeah, it takes a little while to get back into things. First few days, you're ready to go back on vacation and then eventually you're settled back in.
I refuse to sign the request though.
Yeah, I had to thank Scott Herman for taking care of business while I was gone and, and doing it well. So it sounds like everything went, went smoothly.
He's pretty powerful, he got us to cancel the city council meeting so he wouldn't have to give a, he wouldn't have to give a report.
I heard about that from afar and I thought he was, I thought he was pulling my leg. Find out that that was true. Anyway, also, while I was gone, Jeremy and Andrea were able to go through all the steps to get, to secure the permit from Fish and Wildlife for us to pull the gravel out of the creek.
I saw a with truck down there the other day.
Yeah, underneath Broadus Creek, the Broadus Creek Bridge, excuse me. So that took two days, last two days that was done and then we, all the material that we pulled out of the bridge, we took downstream and, and spread out between, between the ponds, the Delta Ponds right next to the sewer plant. I don't really understand that, but personally, I mean, I think there's enough gravel out there and it would have just helped to clear it out in my opinion. But that's Fish and Wildlife, so we should have to deal with that. We did have to kick out a couple campers, a few campers yesterday morning from underneath the bridge so we could finish the work, but overall, I'd say it was a successful project. And the permit we got, which we were trying to get a multi-year permit, we were able to get a five-year permit and we have a, a dry weather plan and a wet weather plan. And the Vactor truck, turns out, that's the wet weather plan because of the, the one rain we got put rain in the creek there and then that coupled with, we're going to attribute it to the, to the, the trees losing leaves and not taking, not sucking as much water up, the creek continued to come up after the rainfall. So that's one of those seasonal, I don't want to call it, not anomalies, but a seasonal occurrence, so.
So you're saying in future years, you could put a piece of equipment down in there and do that mechanically?
That's the idea. That was our, that was our plan in the beginning, was just to get under there with a walk-behind loader or something to, to just push it downstream and spread it out rather than having to take it out with a Vactor truck. It'll be less expensive. I think the cost, the cost was, is going to end up being around $12,000 for this, for the last two days. That was two Vactor trucks, two flaggers and somebody with a walk-behind loader underneath the bridge pushing it around, so. You know, we, we hope that's not an annual cost, but if you compare it to potential damages, flood damages, that's really minimal, I think, so.
How far did you take the gravel?
Just down around, I don't want to say around the corner, from there down between, between the ponds. So the Delta Pond, just behind the sewer plant, it's spread out through there, there were some big holes and so it's, it's down there on a straight run on a turn, so it'll distribute it hopefully downstream as necessary.
Push it on down the road.
Right, so.
And I did notice that there was some equipment cleaning out the ditch on Walnut, which is not us, but a resident had been concerned about that and so it's.
Railroad's been cleaning out along the right of the hole, all the way up to Cropley.
Yeah.
Right.
They're close to Cropley.
Hopefully that'll help for potential flooding.
It helps for some of the issues we were talking about with Jerry too, because it's been a lot of.
Brush clearing.
Been a lot of hiding spots out there.
Right. Yeah, and I guess we had some campers behind the skate park and we have some new campers. I guess they escorted some out and then some, we had a new big tent put up recently, last couple days, the high grass back there, so. Anyway.
We need rain for more ways than one.
We could use some rain, it would help a lot of things, some frost. We started street sweeping. That kept getting pushed back for various reasons, from Della Avenue to the Emergency Water Supply Project to our sweeper needing maintenance. And we started, we got it fixed and we started sweeping and it lasted about two hours and it broke down again. So we hired Sonoma sweepers to get us caught up and they started yesterday, they're going to sweep through tomorrow. We've had a couple complaints about the dust and that's something we can't, we can't really avoid. If we wet it down, then we can't really sweep it and it's just, it's just a matter of, we have to get through this first, first catching up and then, and the dust will be a little, a little less of an issue, so. But it's not, sweeping the street is not going through and vacuuming the street, it's the, the brooms going, the, they just, it's going to create dust, so. Hopefully one more day and we'll be caught up and the dust will, will be a lot less of an issue and hopefully we get our sweeper fixed in the next few days so we can get back on a regular schedule with the leaves starting to, starting to fall, so. The other thing, reservoir storage, we're at 692 acre feet, which is 52% of, of capacity. So we're about, it's about 5% less than we were last year, but we, we have, we have at least six months of water if we were, if it, if the drought continues. So we're, we're in good shape as far as reservoirs go.
Those are both reservoirs combined.
Both reservoirs combined, combined. And that assumes about a 50 acre foot, you know, dead hole, you wouldn't go below that. Anyway, sewer plant, our new MPDS permit was adopted last week, so that'll go into effect, effect is December 1st. And right now, we're working on a metering, a metering project that's consistent so we can be in compliance with our new permit and also as part of the settlement. So.
Did you want to comment on East Hill Road paving?
That's my number five. Uh, yeah, and East Hill Road was paved a couple weeks ago, they have yet to stripe and there are a couple more activities and, but I think De Silva Gates did a.
Looks good.
Did a really good job, so. They just have, I think, striping and raising all our utilities up and.
What are they, what are they going to do on these edges of the road towards Bechtel Road? They still have the cones there, but are, are they going to finish it up in some way?
Towards Bechtel Road where the cones are.
No, no, on East Hill towards Bechtel Road, where the cones are, yeah.
There's supposed to be an AC, like an AC dyke, that was what was there before. So that was my conversation with Tom Gunther from De Silva Gates.
What is that?
Just like, it's a, it's an asphalt curb.
Oh, okay, okay.
It just looks like it's not, you know, it kind of stands out by itself. And that's supposed to go back in, we don't have a, we don't have the timing on that, so.
Well, it's a nice road, it's very, it's very nice to drive on that.
Needs a speed bumper too.
There's a speed bump?
Needs a speed bumper or stops on it or something.
Actually, it's not as bad as I would have expected, you know? They're, they seem to be driving actually a little bit slower than they did before it was repaved, we'll figure.
More activity over there now.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Rod.
Thank you.
Are we going to water and waste water too, or is that sort of the same?
Well, it was, he covered it.
Well, I wanted to make sure we followed up on the violation of the water treatment issues that, that the public is aware and the council's aware and I'm not sure you've covered that at least.
Yeah, we did not cover that. Residents all got?
Yeah, they got a notice, I just want to, you know, report on how we're doing in correcting that situation.
So a big part of the remedy is flushing.
Right. We did discuss, we, we discussed this at the last meeting, I think.
I think I missed that meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, we went over the, the violation and the, the, I think, the biggest part of that, we need to flush as soon as we can. We're working on some other things. I, I, you know, I'd, I'd have to revisit the violation to notice to, to speak more intelligently about it.
Maybe you could check in?
Yeah.
Since we had the public discussion about that at the last.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to Council. All right, uh, let's move on to council and committee reports. MCAG?
MCAG met. Larry was out of town, so I attended. Um, we, it was a field trip meeting. We got to see the suggested improvements for Hopland. Uh, I believe they've abandoned the idea of doing the Hopland bypass and the current recommendation, they involve some safety recommendations to slow the traffic when you come into town. Uh, they also reported on the grants that were, are being put forward for recommendation to the CTC and unfortunately, our Rails with Trails project did not rank high enough to be included in that. I don't know. Uh, the staff at MCAG felt like we had a really good application, so they were, they were frankly rather surprised that it, uh, shook out the way it did. But the trail in Round Valley is now gonna be completed. That was approved as well as, um, I believe a Rails with Trails extension in Ukiah to go down to the business park, uh, south of Ukiah.
Hey, LAVCO?
LAVCO met, but I didn't go cause I was in Hopland.
MTA?
Um, there's, they have met recently, um, and there isn't really anything unusual to report as, as this is, as, going on.
Thank you. Thomas?
Did not meet.
EDFC?
EDFC has met recently and, um, things are really popping there. Um, we also had our, uh, local meeting about local investing and that went really well and the whole direct public offering, which is a vehicle for people to invest their money locally in local business, um, went really well and we now have well over half of the minimum that we need to have the, the public offering, you know, go forward. And the recipient, one major recipient of that, that fund is gonna be the Mendocino Wool and Fiber, um, project, which is very exciting and has all sorts of wonderful spinoff, uh, for our community, including sheep ranchers and fiber artists and weavers and all of those people, uh, as well as direct employment, uh, for people in the, the plant, um, which has already, by the way, been approved by the City of Ukiah for, uh, going ahead with that, that building project. So anyway, that, that project is going very well and anybody who's interested in investing some of their money in that local effort could talk to me or go to edfc.org and find out more about it. Um, they also talked about the, um, Biochar project, which has been, they had a pilot project, which was very successful. It's a, an approach that has all sorts of, um, advantages for water conservation, for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, for improving, uh, the forest health and reducing fire danger, which is really huge, uh, as we all know. So, uh, they're really hoping that that gets some fresh, um, input of, of energy, money, people's time so that they can go to a larger, um, level than the pilot project. But the pilot project has shown that it is a very viable approach, so they just need some, um, to kick it to the next level.
And it can be operated within air quality rules?
Apparently so.
They've gotta set up a Harwood if you want to check it?
Yeah, no, I know.
There's also some progress on the, um, broadband, uh, improving broadband. There's a four county alliance that's been working on that and keeping that moving. Um, the point that Adrian brought up a little earlier, I wanted to get back to. EDFC Steering Committee wants to hear from each of the cities in our county, what our economic development goals are, the top five economic development goals, so that they can, um, you know, address those and check in with us about what, you know, what they can do to help us meet those goals. And I think our only official adopted goals are pretty out of date at this point, but I would love to see maybe the Revite Ed Committee could bring back to the council, um, some recommendations for the top five economic goals. And also the Chamber, of course, is working on this.
And that's due when?
Um, the meeting that, at which they would like it is the very beginning of November.
Because the Revite Ed Committee doesn't meet again until November 5th.
I think that's just about the time, the time that they're wanted by...
We, we have our city goals. Could we just go through those and pick out the ones that are economic related?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, I wanted to bring this back to the council for some discussion at the next meeting uh, because of the fact that Revite Ed might not meet that deadline.
All right, we'll just bring it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, we could probably have a meeting. Getting into what exists and then maybe come up with a recommendation?
Yeah.
Choices. I think that's, um, pretty much it for EDFC, but it's a lot, a lot going on. Oh, there was one other thing and that is the work, um, uh, share, work share kind of, um, facility that EDFC's been working on and they are planning to move the EDFC office, uh, provided they can work out all the details, to the building that's in back of the Methodist Church in Ukiah, uh, which is a, it's separate from the church itself, but there's a two-story building there and, and make that not only EDFC's office space, but have work, uh, share opportunities for people that want to, to, you know, have those facilities without having to go out and get a separate place to rent on their own, not, not be ready for that move. And, uh, so that's being explored for me.
Right. The League of California Cities?
League had their, the meeting was the, uh, the annual conference and I did not go.
Okay. Water and Wastewater Systems hasn't met. Revite Ed met since last meeting?
No.
Yeah, didn't met.
Finance Committee, we're looking at, uh, I've got down here something on the 27th, so we haven't, haven't yet. Um, End Hot Committees, uh, haven't met Caltrans in a while. Listen.
We haven't met since Caltrans didn't attend. We had, and I think we were reported out since that one.
Yeah, I think we did. Center for Arts was reported earlier. Any other committee reports? So, we need to talk just a minute about committee assignments. We have, uh, as part of our settlement agreement, uh, with Brook Trails, we agreed to explore other organizational possibilities of wastewater treatment, management, systems. I'm trying to avoid calling it a JPA, but, cause that's just one, I guess, one possible, uh, you know, uh, direction it might go, but, uh, is, I, I really feel like I, I'm gonna wanna participate in that and then if there's more than one other council person, then I would, uh, anybody else show an interest in, if you do, then I, I would talk to each of you individually and, and try and come up with. Anybody have an interest?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay, well, that makes it easier, I guess. If, if somebody changes their mind, we haven't done that yet, but, uh, you know, we will, we will try and reach out to Brook Trails and tell them that we are.
No, we do.
We're, we're, we, yeah, we're, we're prepared to do that. So, um, on, just a, kind of on a house cleaning measure, uh, right now, uh, on Revite Ed, we have Ron and Holly and on, and one other of these, uh...
Main Street Merchants.
The Main Street Merchants.
Improvement.
Yeah, Main Street Improvement. We have Larry and I. Larry, what would, how would, you know, I think that Revite Ed is gonna take on a lot of the Main Street discussion. How would you, uh, feel about moving up over to take Ron's, and you, you have property on Main Street. I'm sensitive to that. Main Street downtown may be of a special interest to you. I think to stay in the mix of that, maybe switching to Revite Ed might give you a better...
Okay.
...be interested in doing that. Would you mind?
No, not at all.
Doing?
Makes sense.
Okay. So then that would make it Larry and Holly on... Cause I think that, that Main Street Improvement is probably just gonna go away.
Well, we have, we have a, um, working advisory group for the, the grant-funded project. And that's been established. I couldn't, uh, recite all the names at this point, but it's city representative, city staff, um, MCAG, uh, local government condition, uh, commission, Caltrans, um, our fire chief is on there, um, and Supervisor Woodhouse and, and you will serve on that advisory committee for that grant-funded project. And that group is going to provide periodic updates to Revite Ed.
So I have a quick question on that. Um, there was some interest shown at Revite Ed for Bruce, for you to serve on that, but do you think you would, um...
I think I'll just...
I think because of the street involvement. Do you think you would meet that need, being on the working group?
I think I would. I think I would. I think I'd...
I'm happy with that. I like Revite Ed.
Okay, good. So, do we have any other council member reports or recommendations?
I do. Um, uh, some of you might be aware that Mendocino County, um, executive, the Board of Supervisors is, um, accepting application for grants. These are community benefit fund grants. Um, I had Kathy make a copy just of the basic information for everybody. Um, this is a one-time amount of money that is, uh, being distributed from them. And I'm interested in applying as the city for a feasibility study for a recreation district. This topic has been brought up a number of times as something that people are interested in, but I think that there's a lot of legal ramifications and, there's a lot of legal ramifications, uh, political questions and just general feasibility. And so this is a way that we could potentially receive an award to fund a feasibility study without any outlay of city funds.
What's the timeline on that?
It's due on Friday. Um, I'm just gonna pass this around. This is the application. It's not an in-depth application whatsoever. Um, one of the, one of the, uh, things that you need to input, however, is, uh, the names of other key organizations that would collaborate with us to implement the program and I would like to reach out to Brook Trails and the school district.
Make something up.
I would like to reach out to Brook Trails and the school district because if anything happened, it would involve them. As well as the Howard Foundation. Uh, Alan and I were going over this, uh, application and he was thinking, you know, the Howard Foundation is also very, they potentially have interest in developing a pool. They might wanna know this information as well. So I've reached out to them. It's pretty basic, but I just thought I'd pass that out for, for us to see. And this is something that...
So there was a rumor that you would fill that out and turn it in?
Yeah. The idea is that I would take this on, well, working with city staff, obviously. Um, it is a very short timeline and it only kind of occurred to me. And this had to do with the recent town hall meeting and a number of other conversations I've been having. Uh, basically, the grant would be asked, city staff would do an RFP, so there would, that would be an in-kind matching of staff to prepare an RFP and then a consultant would be selected. And that's what the grant would be for.
Well, it seems a little, you know, it's, it's, it seems like it's a little bit of a jump and a stretch in that I think things like this ordinarily, we'd like to have, I'd like to see the agenda so we could have a, you know, a full council discussion about it. But we can always, uh, if we're fortunate enough to get it, doesn't mean we have to take it.
Correct.
So we could have that discussion once, that would make that discussion somewhat more meaningful.
Yes.
We could be discussing whether you were gonna move forward with something that you had on the table. So, I mean, I'd like to, I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it under, under that scenario. I think that, you know, this is an issue that gets tossed around periodically.
Yeah.
About, usually around February through May.
When we're doing our budget?
Doing budget and then it, and, uh, but we've never really put it on the agenda to have a kind of a round the table discussion about the pluses and minuses and alternatives and stuff like that, so.
I do imagine there's going to be a number of applicants for this, for these funds.
You know, so, Adrian, one, one of the other things that, that I thought of as Holly was mentioning that was at that meeting we had with the mayors and managers, they, Sage was talking, I don't know if you were part of that conversation, about the CDC grant funds are, they, small communities have to apply for them. At larger communities, over a hundred thousand, get a...
The CDBG.
Yeah, uh, get us a, uh, you know, get, you know, present, you know, start sit funding and, so they were talking, you know, and it's something we've been working with, Jim Woods, or things, Ukiah has more than us, but we got nixed on a CDBG thing here recently. Uh, that, you know, following along with his ideas, maybe if, if they can qualify as a county and then to, to be, I forget the terminology of that, uh, allotment of money that comes to those jurisdictions. But anyway, I've had some similar characteristics to this, but I just think, you know, go ahead and do this and if we get that, if we are fortunate enough to get it, then we can, we can talk about whether we want it.
One of the other things that Alan brought up today was the EINDs. I think I may have sent something to you about that at one point. A different financing structure. Enhanced. There's some other, um...
Besides special district?
Beside special district that certainly is worth consideration because it wouldn't, one of the negatives is creating more government.
Well, yeah, I mean, the other would be to go with county-wide sales tax. Get, you know, a deal and then divvy it up by, again, by, by zip code or population or something like that. To, or, you know, so I think there's some other, other things, at least to have part of the conversation.
Oh, um, just a comment about that is that countywide effort would be perhaps even more challenging than a, um, like using the school district boundaries as our, as our district of recreation.
You know, one of the...
But can I, just wanted to add also, um, especially since any kind of recreation district, um, is gonna be a long process and take a lot of working out. In the meantime, I, I would just like to explore the idea that since the city with its population of slightly under 5,000 is serving the zip code, which is about 13,000 or even more, that the county that collects taxes from all of us, including, you know, in the city as well as outside the city, might be asked to contribute to some of the services that the city pays for that are taking advantage, uh, you know, that are being provided to the county residents in this area. And I don't know, you know, if that has ever been broached before and if other jurisdictions have considered this, but it makes sense in our situation where, you know, we, uh, we are a small city boundary jurisdiction and yet we're serving, obviously, the holes of the population.
One, well, I, I think this thing could really...
It could be a bigger conversation.
Well, yeah, we could, I have questions that, that I think are relevant here too, but I, let's just leave it where, where that is and see what, see what we can do with it.
I, I have, uh, one other thing I'd like to put in.
On this topic?
Yeah, well, actually, it's on the, uh, the committee assignments. We got all of that. Um, you know, I, I was happy to give up the Revite Ed. I, I think it makes sense to have Larry sitting in there as well. But there is one other committee that I, I felt that could be part of a trade, if you would, and that's the water wastewater systems. And the thinking is, is that the... And the thinking is, is that the, that committee has pretty much been focusing on the new construction, and that's pretty much done. And I see that committee focusing more on the water and the aquifer, since we're starting to really get into it, and there are some issues involved with our groundwater basin. And I, and I've been, over the past, I don't know, year, I suppose, getting involved with the county and other agencies, looking into it, and I think that would be a committee that I would like to switch with Larry on, since he took Revite Ed, and focus more on the groundwater basin issues.
I will, I will.
What?
Discuss it and get back to you.
Good enough.
And also, water capital improvement projects are in that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Okay. One other thing in, under council member reports that I'd like to, to bring up as a subject of conversation maybe for a future meeting, is looking at the way that we manage and operate our wastewater treatment plant. There's some other options out there in the wide world of managing municipal enterprise funds like that, and those that are being privately managed as opposed to being managed by the public. And I think that it's a, a discussion that may be with a new plant, or a plant that's now a couple of years old, but a new plant and all-new kind of automated systems and much more advanced set of electronics and operating systems, and a much more highly regulated, that, that's not particularly new, regulated environment for compliance with our permits and the, and the consequences of being non-compliant with your permit. And I think prior to this budget cycle, or in these coming months, it, I think it would just be prudent on our part as policymakers and looking at what's the best way for the community to stay current and stay effective in, in managing that piece of business down there that is, as we know, has got a lot of, got a lot of potential for headache and heartache and pocketbook ache in it as well. But I just think that we deserve it to the community to, to do what we're doing with our eyes wide open, and being able to have an honest, an impartial look at whether the way we are managing that is in the city's best interest. So unless I hear.
Can you have to discuss that?
Something, we can maybe discuss that at a future talk.
All right, one other council member reports. I believe Adrian and Kathy know about this already, but I am going to miss our one and only meeting in December. I'm not going to be here.
The, the other one that, and I think this is on the radar, but I just, more to staff, is that, that FEMA has come out with a new floodway and flood zone and new, a new profile of what is in, you know, is flood impaired properties in, in the community, and I think we're on a somewhat limited timeline to respond, or if there is any response, you know, any flexibility in that, or, but in any, in the least regard, I think we need to get, we need to have a tutorial on that. And, and I think that John went to become an instructor sort of, so I guess that may be coming, but I just wanted, that's, owning a piece of property that wasn't flood-impacted yesterday and now is flood-impacted, you will find to be a significant change in your economic status in the community.
Does FEMA communicate at all with property owners about that change?
No.
No.
The maps are under review right now.
That's between you and your lending agency.
Or, yeah, your insurance.
And maybe the community, new, community lending bank won't care whether your property is in a floodway and will give you a mortgage on that property without flood insurance, but the community bank, oh, by the way, will not. And, pretty much by federal law, they will not. So, anyway, it has, I believe that that footprint is, is expanded in the community at this point from what it was.
Considerably.
And it is not, may, maybe something, we need, we need to get, we need to get up to speed. Okay, we have any Good and Welfare?
Yeah, I want to say something with the Good and Welfare when you're ready.
I am.
Okay. Bear with me, council. I went to Pennsylvania this week for 10 days, and, to a little, a little community part of Pennsylvania, and, which is called Mount Lebanon. And my daughter just bought a house there. Anyhow, to make a long story short, they had a block party that took in about two and a half blocks, that was a dead-end street. So everybody is meeting and talking and, and introducing theirself and where they're from, so Virginia and I, and our name tag said that we were from California and whatever. So everybody just asks you where you were from, and they had never heard of Willets, and that's just pretty much typical of what's going on. So I came across a gentleman, his name was, name was Tony, and he said, where are you from? And I told him that we're Northern California, whatever, and I said, well, we're from Willets. And he says, I know where Willets is. He said, we just bought Micro Four. And I had no idea that, that that was, even on the block or anything happened. And I thought it was interesting that within a two and a half block that I would come across somebody who even knew where Willets is, let alone.
And knew something you didn't know.
So anyhow, I, I gave him my card and told him if he needed any help to call Adrian and.
Gave him my card, told him to call.
You know, she was a city manager, and, yeah, but he does have my phone number, but I just thought it was interesting, so you really never know where, you know, you're going to be and what you're going to do that somebody might not, you know, might know where it is, and that was just interesting.
Well, that would, no, that, that is a.
My mother-in-law works for Micro Four, and she's actually in Pennsylvania right now, so maybe that's.
They're, they're owned by a, a division of Westinghouse Electric, which is a.
That's funny, though.
But I have another Mount Lebanon, a Willets connection, and that would be me, because I've lived there.
At Mount Lebanon?
Well, but actually, the next town over is Scott Township. You can walk across the street, and you're in a different township. Mount Lebanon's a pretty, pretty city.
Yeah, it's really nice.
Well, come on, some more Pennsylvania stories.
That's great.
The Steelers won.
I have Good and Welfare. I'm part of the Women in Business Group of the Chamber of Commerce, and they have their monthly meeting here. I want to thank Kathy and the city, because we were able to use the flat screen. We had a presentation on kind of like the next level of social media, and I think that, and business marketing, and I think that the attendees really got a lot out of it. It's a, it's a great group, it's a benefit of the chamber, and it was, I was happy to be hosting it, because it, it really went well, I thought.
I agree.
Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, no, excuse me, we have closed session. So we will adjourn to closed session, and we will adjourn shortly thereafter. That one item that was mentioned earlier, it's existing litigation between Remco Hydraulics and City of Willets. So anyway, thank you for joining us evening. If there's any resolution to.